Yeah, so we'll start, okay, so basically what you have in front of you is, are we recording? Okay, so basically what we have in front of you is the draft BSC with all the feedback taken into consideration. So Priority One and Priority Two, so we'll start Priority One. Last time we met, there was some feedback given around kind of wording about safety. So that's been reflected there as well as some of the data with the goal points for Priority One. So if y'all want to take a look at that and have any questions or feedback recommendations, we will be taking copious notes. I should have the baseline for achievement for Domain One by the end of this month. And then again, we won't have baseline for MAP until September. So the baseline for achievement where it says Domain One, then when it says TBD, I'll have that hopefully by the end of the month. And then the next two squares, the first square I'll have in September, and the second square will probably mid-year because that tells me how many have grown. But we will have, we'll be able to still reach the 5% as our goal based off of that baseline. We just won't be able to fill that box in at this moment. Questions about Priority One? Yes, so like basically we're going to run the report and track kids who have more than one removal. So basically, once they have a removal, we're going to monitor and make sure they don't get multiple removals because it's the recidivism. So specifically also, I want to, when I report on that, I also want to look at our DAP removals and see if we can reduce, we've got a couple of things that we're going to be doing with counseling and stuff this year that'll hopefully reduce the students returning to DAP. Not, with Sarah, sometimes they don't really like it. She runs a very tight ship. But because sometime, I'll be honest, one of the things we've noticed is there really wasn't a reentry plan, an explicit, like proactive reentry plan to bridge them back out. So when they go from such a structured environment back to kind of more freedom, sometimes they can't thrive in that if they're not prepared for it. So then they do something and like literally, most kids are within one to three days, they're back in. It's that survey. It's the survey, and so so we're going to try and rewrite the survey questions to be very specific of like, "I feel, I feel safe in," like, "I don't feel like an intruder can come in my building." And then I also want to put something about, "I feel safe among my peers" so that we can understand, especially since we're going to survey more than once a year, and try and address whatever it is that's making them feel unsafe. Yeah. Yeah, they can do verbatims. They're very interesting, too. I didn't know that the kids had done them, and so I went back and read them. But all that work around survey, and later on when we look at other ones, we've already like scheduled DEICs to start the first month of school and more frequently so that we can work with staff. We've scheduled the parent roundtables that we hope we can kind of refine that practice so they can help design the survey and then help champion the survey so we get more participation and ownership of it. Do you want to hit Priority Two?
Yep. Are y'all ready to move on to Priority Two?
Sure.
Okay, sure. That didn't sound very promising, Mr. Burt. Okay, so Priority Two, if you look under key strategic actions, we still have expand our path teacher program to advance our staff and to offer professional development training opportunities. However, those are no longer listed as measures. And one of the reasons why I took the measurement for path teachers off because that means we can't fill it with certified teachers. And I don't know that we want that to be, to continue to move upwards. You know, like, hey, let's grow our path program. That means we have less certified teachers we're able to hire. So we still want to grow that program, but I don't know that that should be a measurement. Are y'all okay with that? Okay. And then for training, there wasn't a real concrete way yet to measure, like when we have child nutrition or an electrician. Like their trainings may look different, so we still want to offer trainings, but we're just going to measure the mental health training for HB3 because the state requires us to do that. So that's why I kept that one on there and took the others off. So we'll still work with our auxiliary staff, train them, but they may be specific trainings that like only an electrician would take or only a custodian would take. And then trying to like group that all together, we weren't real sure what that was going to look like. If you look at safety, the baseline was 83%. And going back to that survey question, currently it says strongly agree, somewhat agree, and then it was somewhat disagree, strongly disagree. The 83% was strongly agree. So I think next year when we ask that question, it needs to be agree or disagree. So if you do strongly agree and somewhat agree, it's 97%. But I didn't include that in there because I want to know exactly when it's just yes or no, agree or disagree. Yes. And then for the MAP growth, we won't have that data yet since this is something new. We're starting this year. It'll probably be mid-year would be our first round for that as well. Teacher incentive allotment, currently 61% of our teachers are eligible for TIA. We would like to increase that by at least 2% each year. So it's about 150 teachers right now that are eligible. The mental health training, that was already designed by the state with those numbers, so we followed that. Teacher retention, it's not bad to lose some teachers sometimes. So it's not like we want to have 100% retention rate, you know, sometimes it's okay. So we kept it at 90. We were at 89 this year. We did lose one late last week, so it might have dropped to 88%, so I need to look at that. And then on the last one, decreased teacher absenteeism. I put 1%, but I wanted to see if y'all were okay with decreasing it by 2% so that would get us under 20% over the next four years of teachers that have more than 10. They can use their 10, but it's when you get to 11 is where we got to the 27%. But I just wanted to get your feedback on that one.
And that doesn't include FMLA?
No, staff development, school business, none of that. It's just sick.
That's just strictly classroom teachers?
Yes, strictly just classroom teachers as well. With, well blackout helped a lot this year. I would say that helped significantly. People's, you know, and for those days, it's just the day before the holiday. You know, like you're about to go off work for a week and then people want to start vacation a little earlier, which I get, you know, but then it becomes a scheduling nightmare because a lot of times subs don't want to pick up that day because they're not ready to go.
I think I know where you're going.
Have we ever offered an incentive for zero absences?
I feel like years ago, we probably did.
I thought my wife was crazy this year. I kept trying to get her to take a day off in the spring and she wouldn't do it because she wanted $600.
Yeah, so
But I mean, it helps.
It was like 800, 600 for one, zero and one.
Yeah.
And I'm like, just take a day off.
She's like, no, I want that check.
She took one and she's like, I'm not taking this anymore.
I mean, we can definitely look at incentives and see, or even just recognize them if anything for like a drawing or something.
I just don't know how much, how much this chronic absenteeism is costing us and it may be, it may be beneficial to look into it at least.
I've built in some attendance incentives for students this year into our budget. There might be, which we need to sit down and talk about a little further to finalize that, but there might be a mechanism to where we can make it a student and staff attendance incentive to break it up a little bit, so.
We'll definitely explore it. Drawing was great, and it was like we would do it on, they would all have to log in onto a Zoom and they would like draw the name.
If you lower that, you need like five teachers, about 5%.
And they'd be like, oh my god.
Subpay.
Right.
I don't know that it would lower it 5%, but it might be worth a try.
It's become fewer and fewer every year. But I also think you need to give a little bit of grace and maybe not zero because things happen, like things, so, but within zero to two a semester. And then you compile that at the second semester and then do one for each semester and then do one overall cumulative and
The problem I see with it though, and I'll just be flipping what I said a minute ago, is that this 27% are people that have missed 10-plus days. You're not talking about the people that are missing one or two. You're going to save money on the people, you're going to save money on the, you're going to probably get your, that number might not change that much, but you might get a lot of those that were one or two absent people become zeros. That helps you.
Yep.
We don't, we don't ever reward people for doing good things.
Reinforcing the intended behavior.
And then I think that's so much more important, which we talked about. This is a touchy subject to me, and I've talked about it a little bit because if you're talking about the teachers that they truly have accumulated these days because of years of being there.
And showing up.
Didn't take a single day off or only one day off a whole year. And then that next year, they have accumulated a whole other set of days. And if it's not incentivized enough for them to, to not use them, right, as they're getting closer to retirement, whatever it may be, like, hey, I've got all these days, I'm in here.
Because they do, they just go away, you know. Like we pay them $50 for their local days, but their state days?
They're gone.
They're gone, like
So you're leaving, and even at that point, I think you have to be here 10 years before you can pay.
For the local days, yes.
40 days on the table, 40 days, 50 days, whatever it may be.
What the problem is though is those aren't the teachers you have problems with. It's the ones who are constantly calling out and you can't, to me, you have to go at it aggressively because if you try to be kind of passive with it, that gets us in the position we're in now.
Well, and that's why you need to be, it's very intentional, right?
That's what I'm saying, like if it's over your 10 days, then you have to do something.
Well, and then you've got a few who, you put something in like that and they'll get that perfect attendance every year and then they're getting ready to retire and then take off the entire year.
And we don't necessarily have policies in place that tell us they can't. They can still take their day, you know. It's just you might, your campus may have to cover for you.
I just, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, if it's days earned, they shouldn't get penalized for their days.
That's why we left it at 10, yeah. But then it's like, you think about the kids.
And they still have, like you were saying, so it's 10 in a year, but maybe you already have 30.
Like I had four in my daughter.
What was your question?
The different days, how many do we have, do you think we have that have more than 10 days they can take?
Oh, a lot. Because we have so many teachers with so much experience.
I mean, other than, yeah, because we remember when we looked at years of service, it was like 10 or 15 and it was like, it was quite a bit. It's your first year teachers that don't have.
I mean, is it a real, is it a real?
Problem, yes.
I'm talking about ones that are retiring and things like that, taking a ton of days.
So it depends, because some of them say they're going to retire and then they do all the days and then they don't retire.
Or they start at three years before retirement, you know, which I get because they're just trying to
But 40 days of absences is equal to eight weeks of instruction for kids. And that's the struggle, like that's the thing when you have to realize is like, even, even if you have a sub, a good sub, it doesn't replace your teacher. And so that's the, that's the rub, the rub there. And so the blackout dates have helped, the blackout dates have helped. I think an incentive rewarding and recognizing, because sometimes you do things because it's the right thing to do and you get no recognition, it kind of taints it when you see someone else missing 20-plus days. So I think to Adam's point, recognizing the intended behavior would be, and we got that feedback from a teacher earlier this year about our absence policy. I think that would be a good way as well to extend that olive branch. But we also implemented a mechanism where once you hit a certain amount of days, you got a notice of concern, like, hey, just want you to know, you're at this mountain of absences. Nothing replaces the teacher and, you know, we want to minimize disruption of instruction so at least they knew, because sometimes life hits you fast and you don't realize how many days you've actually taken. So we have that too, and for the most part, that went over pretty well. And it was very systematic and it was very consistent, same language used across all campuses. And so we'll continue that strategy as well, but
But have we had teachers recently that were retirees or that knew they were leaving that have taken 25, 30 days any year?
Teachers, no. That I can think of.
The ones that took a lot of days this year that were teachers were not retirees.
But even one that you and I are thinking of didn't have as many as I thought when I did it. I wouldn't say it was like 17, 16, so.
I just, I just wonder how big the problem that is. Because I know there's these teachers that stay a long time in the profession and accumulate days. Like I, I wish they could get paid for them, I do. I mean, I wish there was a way that we had all the money in the world and we can pay for them or the state did it or whatever. But I, I just don't, like I have a family, me and my mom talked for years. My mom had so many days, I don't even know, and she's like, I'm just going to lose them, but I'm not going to not go to school and teach these kids. And so, and to me, a lot of those longtime teachers are just that way, they're going to go teach the kids, so.
But newer generations don't think that.
I think there might be a mechanism where we could possibly buy out some of those days in future years. I think, I don't know that that's something that we could afford this year. But this is also one reason why some districts will say you can only roll over so many days. Like they will, like we don't have a limit on how much we accrue in state or local.
But if there was an incentive to have, to take zero or one days, let's just say each semester. Let's not even say for the year. Let's say zero or one days a semester and let's say it was, I'm just using 500 as a, $500. At the end of the year, you know, could, could that be in lieu of rollover?
As a buyout, yes, like
Of not, maybe not all of them, but some of them. I wouldn't want to take all the rollover, because some people, some people value the rollover. Like you don't want to, you know, so, I don't know, we can talk about it later, but I don't want to get too far down that path, so, okay.
My, my wheels are turning only on that because I just think of certain scenarios this year where people maybe had accrued days and had a crisis and were able to tap into those days.
So like, so like short-term disability? I change mine every other year because as my days build, that's less money I pay. Disability, because now I've got that covered from the state.
You don't have to pay for disability.
And let me preface that, when I said a limit, it's a high limit. It might be 60 local and 60 state. It's long enough to cover an FMLA. But it keeps people from accumulating 100 days, you know, in total. You know, 100 local days, because 100 local days, that's, you know, 25 years of never using a local day, which we, I just looked at last year's stuff and we don't have too terribly many of those that are over 30 local days, probably, probably 30 people. Yeah, but
Well, they show up though.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And I'm not, and I'm, and I'm not promoting it, but it's something I should know. A lot of districts do do that for that reason.
Is there anything else on Priority Two? Y'all good with Priority Two? Okay, thank y'all.
Priority Three. Unanimously chose the goal. And it's to foster meeting partnerships with families, community members, local agencies to support student success, build trust and strengthen our school's being through transparent communication, inclusive engagement, and shared responsibility. Those are our key strategic actions there. I will tell you this, that I am really concentrating on the communication between district and campus level and community, like that's a, that's a, that's an issue, we know that. So that is going to be a lot of my focus. There'll be training going on with staff. There will be teeth in that this year. And so that's, that's one that's really, really important to me. And then kind of continue what we're doing on the other fronts. Some of the stuff was in the old BSC is like having as many community family engagement events as we can. We've talked about doing more district-level things. You know, like we've already, Chief and I talked about it a little bit last year. We're going to partner this year. But an example of a more district-wide event is like, we're going to have somebody come out and do some fentanyl awareness and how to use Narcan and how to, doing some more things like that. Technology, there's some maps training that I think the parents have to kind of go through and doing some things that, you know, more that here's what we do here, how to use. Maybe, maybe it's like, okay, what's the difference between Canvas and Skybird? You know, because there's a lot of like, we're always seeing my kids great, you know. And so doing, doing some, some things that are, I guess, more grassroots, more what it means to us and not this big statewide things, but more here's what's going on at Huffman ISD. We talked about setting the district community addresses, just doing like short snippets of like, here's where we are, here's what we stand. It doesn't necessarily have to be just Angel sitting in front of a camera talking. It can just be, here's, you know, here, here's some things that are going on and some things that we're focusing on just to kind of keep people informed. Because I don't think you can hit them with enough, I don't know that we'll ever get on a survey that the, that the district communicated would be too much. We're always going to get that they didn't do enough, except transportation alert. I get a lot of, please want somebody to listen to you, so. And we're about to, we're about to change the way we do that and hopefully this new routing software is going to, to help with that. And so, yes. And so if you go to the indicators, like I said, increasing the amount of district-wide events, we're going to get a baseline number this year. Because in years past, we've used a lot of different things for, to meet this goal that I don't think necessarily were like, not just that, but just like things we were just having anyways. Like I don't, I'm not sure though, you know, I don't even, what's an example?
Which one?
For the, for the, the number we were getting for like community parent and community events.
Oh, we were having
Like awards, like awards was on here. Like that's not a, that's not necessarily like informational or that's just something that we have to recognize kids. Volunteer participation, that's going to be parents and students. I'll come up with a baseline somehow to try to, to, you know, I can look at the, at the volunteer from campuses, but I really also want the kids to be out in the community volunteering for things as well. And then advisory meetings, as far as like roundtables and SHAC and campus improvement and all the stakeholder groups, that's going to be a baseline number of meetings that we're going to have for the year. We've also got other committees that we're planning. The next one is kind of based on the survey questions that we had before. And it was like one survey, it was, it was like a couple of survey questions that I kind of broke it down, kind of like we were doing, talking about with the safety is, you know, it's like, do we trust the school? Do we have pride in the school? Yes. Would you send your school? Would you, would you recommend others? And they're like, yes, you know. And so we kind of broke those down into, does it foster a sense of pride in the community? I want 70% of our community members to say yes. Like Huffman, being a Huffman Falcon is something that makes me proud. And then, does it provide a high-quality education? Is it preparing my kids for whatever endeavors they're going to pursue? And then the last one is strengthening community trust by, are we communicating with you transparently? So I wanted to really kind of pull that one out because I think it's going to be really hard to get 70% here. I think that's going to be hard. I think that's my, that's definitely my goal, but I think that's going to be hard because again, I don't, it's very difficult. For someone to be like, yes, I feel like they, they did a really good job because there's always something that gets missed, and so.
I would think the bad thing about it is the survey is the ones that want to
And I think, and of the survey a little bit, I want to do the survey one, one time a year, year or two because I want to promote more people. You know, even when we have these community-wide events, hey, I want you to go ahead and do the survey right here. And so after they've had a good experience, having them do some of these things. Because I think, I think you're right, you know, it's kind of like when you go leave a review. Typically, people aren't going to go leave a review unless it's a bad review. You have to have a really good experience to go leave a good review.
Do they limit one person to one survey or is there a way to do that?
I think it does.
You can't just go back.
The only thing they could do is, if you're an employee and a community member, you could have a chance to fill out, if you use like your work and your personal.
Right. So you'd have to really get creative and, you know.
And I think one of the things is as we're communicating with the community and as we're do, we, we need to showcase these three buckets. Because what Mandy was kind of, when we looked at the data, there was like five questions to answer one thing, and they were, they were all different. They were all over the place. And then all of these buckets that you see here, they were all in one. It was like one finite thing. Well, you might be proud or optimistic of how things are going in the district and still have concerns about the quality of instruction. Or you might be good on those two and still have concerns about the transparency of communication. This is going to allow us to see that. The one edit I'll make is the baseline will be to be determined and probably the goal would be 70%. But since we're going to survey twice, we'll be able, after that first survey, we'll be able to go back in and fill in that baseline and kind of with these specific questions. And that's why the parent roundtable and all that's going to be so important to startups earlier this year and to be more frequent so that way, we, we're going to reiterate, we need your help to get our community to fill out this survey and to take it seriously because they're going to be in this work with us. So Roundtable's got to be a bigger group of people than the six or 10 that we had.
Who's creating our surveys and our surveys?
We do, so that's why we have the autonomy to do that. So this, the first meeting is going to be like, this was our survey, y'all. Like, and this is what our BSC is and this is what we're trying to do. How do we create questions that anyone will understand this is what they're asking?
Right. And I don't want to necessarily like load questions. I really want people, you know, like when they go to do, I just foster a sense of pride. I don't, you know, I don't want to load that in a way that you can only answer it one way, you know. And so that's why I think these things need to be fleshed out individually, whether you're prideful, whether we're delivering good instruction and whether the communication is there. And so I don't want it, that's, that's crazy and it makes you proud.
I think that needs to be a verbatim. Like our verbatims are, what are two good things and what are two things that need to improve? And it's at the end of the survey. And so you may say, I'm proud, but then I don't see an opportunity to put a verbatim until 25 questions later. No. What, what causes you to feel proud or what doesn't? And then that, that is so powerful for us to really understand and pivot if we need to pivot and make sure that we're kind of all going in the right direction.
Yeah, I think like that third bucket is something like, that's what we have, how are you asking?
And the surveys have been pretty much the same for the past five years?
Yes.
So now's the perfect time to revamp them with changing the BSC.
I would, I would. You know, like does the district regularly like provide these, you know, clear time and transparent communications? Kind of have no option to say, yeah, well, they do.
But I, I don't think we, I mean, obviously I don't want to spend the money to have some high professionally prepared survey for us based on what our, but we, we use this to make all our decisions, right? Results and decisions, and so I would suggest that when we do develop that survey that we do, if we can, have someone, I mean, because that, I mean, there are people that this is what they do. They look at what your goals are, what you want to measure, and they create a survey that's meant to do that. And we may be missing something if, when we, and, and they may go, hey, need to do this, need to change this, maybe they didn't pay somebody to recreate the whole wheel, but, you know, to smooth it out for us. It might be something we look at because that's the one thing that I've said is always about.
I was going to say, yeah, quadrants could have a.
How we get a true picture, like you said, just throw in the survey out to the community and say whoever wants to take it, versus the way we, we get data back, but also the survey itself. So I would maybe look into it, maybe costs too much and we just, we got to do it the way we do it, but then that's fine, but.
But we could run, so through our.
Oh, I know, and then it's learning process, we've been doing it for five.
Well, and through our, our, the service provider for the survey, I know that they will run like a litmus test if you ask them on a question, to be like, hey, this might be problematic. But then the other thing is, is that we need to incentivize high completion rates of the survey. So when we do staff, we need to complete it by campus and, and do incentives. For parent survey, we could do it by campus, and then community, we can maybe just do kind of a drive and come up with something that would be, hey, help the schools do blank by filling out the survey, and people would be willing. Like, I used to be on my car rider line with my QR code, because I wanted to win the tray of cookies from the district. But we would, and we would all be wearing a QR code and we would always have the highest participation rate, and that in turn, like sometimes the feedback, it's, it's a gift good and bad. Sometimes those years I'd have feedback that I wasn't really wanting, that was like, oh my gosh, but I needed it. And then other years, we got really good feedback and it just helped us move our bus, so.
I kind of would love to see the difference in feedback from, like you're saying, just using your priorities, like, just if you did nothing and just put it out there like we normally have, just say, hey, take it if you want to. Who's going to give you reviews, people that are upset?
Yep.
Versus if we said, okay, let's be strategic and let's do a true sample and, and pick up the phone and call people and say, hey, you know, and, and get a true sample. I would love to see the difference in the numbers.
Right, and so, and, and one thing I was just thinking about also is like, you know, we can throw out a poll or, or a survey out on Parents' Square anytime, and we can just be like, one question.
Just check in, check in.
Just check in, here's a check in.
Yeah.
You know, just to see kind of where people are at, because even though they, they, they say that, you know, they just ignore those Parents' Squares or whatever, they don't.
We need to hear from you.
I can see the industry's and I can see who's a white kid and all that thing, how many people are notified.
How's our syllabus?
Yes. Thumbs down. And so, you know, that's definitely, and, and we get, we get to rebuilding the roundtable and stuff like that, we're going to.
I would love to see that, I'd love to see Parents' Square box out one question, we need your feedback, just one question, see how many people we get to answer.
Yeah.
And Mandy, I'm going to put zero for the baseline for the district-wide events.
Okay.
And then what do we want to set as our goal for this year, like three or four, one each quarter?
For.
Because I know we could do MAP, that's going to be one that'll cover everyone.
So is that the third?
The first one, Huffman ISD will increase parent community participation.
Maps is in the.
No, I'm saying for like, yeah, do we want to set one per quarter?
Yeah, sure.
And then from there.
Yeah, one in nine weeks. Yeah, it's anonymous. And so that would be. Oh, yeah.
But that's why like create a competition amongst the campuses a lot, a lot of times.
Like help your campus, you know, whatever.
Win the cookies.
Even like with the education foundation, we saw that, like percentage of people who were contributing monthly or whatever, like I remember Shirley used to do competitions like that, that was, as principal, you're like, come on, guys.
We, so we would do that, we used to do the halfback program, so whatever our campuses would donate, we would get half back in a check as a principal for our discretionary fund. And so one year I literally got a hundred dollars, and like, that's enough to get half of you a biscuit at McDonald's. And so then they understood, like, I'm going to reward you for doing it, and so then the next year, and then you'd get the check. So it's based on what you, and so I think this year we had pitched out quarterback, maybe quarterback, not halfback, but if we did something like that, then they see it's coming directly back to them, and so that'll also drive that. Anyone, anything else on priority three? If you notice, we're trying to do things that are measurable that we can report on throughout the year.
Should we worry that ginger left when we got to four?
Four, and when we, and four is probably the most challenging one, because four is so big, she's ready.
They're worried. I'm out. Sorry about that. All right, so moving on to the financial section, our, our priority was written, our goal is to support the strategic allocation of resources to advance instructional priorities, promote long-term sustainability, and reflect community values through transparency and responsible stewardship of taxpayer funds. So I think we first wanted to check to see, how do you guys feel about that? Are you, are you good with it? That's what we workshopped?
Yes.
Which one?
Stewardship.
Stewardship, yeah.
No, just a little. I know what it means.
Promotes excellence. Okay, so great, so moving on to our strategic actions, because, and I'm trying to move through this kind of fast, because I know some of you need to leave by 10. Our inputs are instructional return on investment, that's something that we want to look at over the next year. We don't have a metric for that quite yet, but it's something that we feel like is really important, so you're not going to see it down in the output, but we've got it listed out here, up here as a, as something key that we want to look at over the, over the next year. Capital Improvement Plan, this is another one of those things that you're not going to see on the output at the bottom, but you're going to see pieces of it that tie into that. We need a capital improvement plan. Adam and I have, have discussed that, and we're getting ready to, to hopefully recommend someone that we would like to work with to, to further that over the next year. But we didn't list that down at the bottom because we're not going to have a metric until we have the capital improvement plan. So we want to get that in place, but we have other things at the bottom to try to, to try to gauge that.
When's the last time we did, I mean, it's been a little while since we, I mean, I've seen, I've seen pieces of improvement plans, okay?
So, so that's, that's probably the last.
That has changed, you know?
We, we were looking at engaging with an individual like six months ago, that we need to have this discussion maybe about if we're going to continue with that person or if we're going to look at some other options. But that's something that we need to take a deeper dive into. We, we have a, a good rough draft, I would say.
Yeah.
But we've never really formalized it until.
I mean, the, the, when we started the, the last bond, you know, we had a general plan, right, that we were working off of, and I just kept, I think I thought after the bond like that, we're going to have to dig in and update that like soon.
Not only update it, but it needs to be deeper. It was very surface level.
Right, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It was like facilities.
It was very broad facilities, yeah.
Yes, it needs to be, it needs to be looking, we need something to look at all of our assets, our, our chillers, our.
And I had one.
You need that, I don't need to see that.
Well, no, no, that's all right, but when we get ready for the bond, when I'm asking for any chiller, so.
That's why we need it, yeah.
The HVAC of this system is, is at its max, it's, it's past its lifespan, nobody knows that, I don't have a document other than one that I created that, to show that. And so when we get ready for the next bond, and I'm asking for, for these chillers, and I'm asking for these systems, the roof of this building is the original roof, we're starting to have leaks in places, well, there's a reason we're having roof leaks because of the, the age of it, right? But we, our document doesn't go that deep.
So you're talking about bringing someone to do that, a new broad document that then you can drill down each individual.
So we would, yeah, we, we, Tasby does a, a underplate this too, where they will go as deep as you want, they'll go through and study everything, or we can go through and give them dates of, of systems that we have, but, but then it becomes a tool for us when we sit down and talk about budgetary planning for next year, like, I'm like, ginger, look, these are the things that are about to go out, what do we want to go and spend money on, what do we want to wait for the bond on? So it's, it's a deeper dive, and I really wanted to try to do something before, in the transition of Mr. Wade and Mr. Turner, because Mr. Turner needs that, you know, like, where are we at, what's the state of, of our stuff? And just because of the, the financial planning that we're going to have to do to, to account for all that, or we didn't get it done that fast.
I built that into the budget this year, which is one reason why we never moved forward with it, last year it wasn't built into.
I worry about that, like Doug just knew that wasn't about to go out in the next couple of years, but it wasn't written down anymore.
And so this would be a working document, so that we're going through, and I've created some of that, just through conversations with Doug and all that, and so, you know, last roof replacement, some timelines, and I think I showed the, it's probably before the, you guys came on, but put some of our HVAC and some of those things, but yeah, so this would be a, a working documents that we go and update and.
Do you have any schedule?
Yeah, you do, and you're, and you're planning off of it, right? And so we, because right now, our past project has been we wait until it breaks and then we fix it and.
But that's built into this.
You do get ahead of a lot.
Yes, so I actually, just, just to give you a reference, I, we went through something called a long-range facility study at Liberty, but it was a little different than I think what, what we did here in Huffman. I wasn't involved in, at Huffman, but at Liberty, it wa, I mean, they went through and they looked at every, I mean, every awning, every window to look to see if it was still, they built this huge list, and then we went through and we were like, okay, that's maintenance, that's something that we need to, and we would go through and say, okay, we want this done quarter one of this, this time period, so that we could get on a, we could get everything back up to date, and we also knew those big things that we needed to save for and, and to spend money on, and what was going, what useful life was, was about to, we were, was about to expire. So Dr. Skinner and I have talked a lot about, we need something to that level to be able to not only make sure that we have the capacity for our students, but also to keep those facilities in, in good repair, so. Then moving on to the multi-year financial forecast updated and presented to the board annually, I've got some things, again, down at the bottom that will follow that. And we've got a number of meetings held for community engagement, focused on fiscal and operational matters, that could fall just as easily into priority three, and that might be something that we want to do, but I've also listed something at the bottom that would be more specific to that. So Adam, would you like to start with the first two?
Yeah, I can do that. So the first two, we were trying to think, it's, yeah, part of, part of the fact, part of it was the transparency piece, like, this is a huge piece for our community, we know that, and so how do we create some transparency? So the first two are related to our, our bond projects. These get a little bit tricky, and, and we'd love to hear a bit of thoughts on it, because, you know, we, we talked about projects within budget, well, that's not always reasonable. Some projects are coming under budget, and some are coming a little over budget, the key piece of that being the entire budget that we're staying within that, right? Timelines are kind of that same way, you know, we, timelines are, are fabricated date that we just throw a dart at, so I think we're going to be done by this day. Some projects, when we're talking about, some of them are going to be outside, and it's going to take a little bit longer. Our camera systems, we had some cameras that were just on back order, that took a little bit longer. We have a June timeline to be done, but we really knew that August is our timeline because kids weren't coming back, so we're really not concerned about it, right? And so the monitoring those for you guys is important, so it's more of a, almost like a report out piece kind of thing, to keep you guys engaged, because then that in turn allows us to be transparent with our community of where we are with that. And we just, we're not, we're not sure what this looks like from a measurable standpoint of how we reflect that on this.
I just think that the transparency is the main thing, like, it's one thing if you come tell me, hey, we're running late for this reason, it's another thing if you just don't come tell me.
Right.
And then I wonder, and I make up my own reason why.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's, that's the key is with, with those things. I love, I think the goal of being a hundred percent on time is awesome. If you come back and it's at 90% and you give me the reasons, it's, it may be in red, but that doesn't mean it's bad, you know?
Time's the one variable that's very tough to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, like as far as the measurable is, like on the overall budget, you know, you could always have a delta of, you know, 95% budget or something.
And that's what we talked about, was trying to kind of calculate the percentage of, of where to be.
Almost somewhere a hundred.
What you make name of, be about 90% is what you make name of.
93%? I don't know.
Old school age.
You may not meet that goal, but the goal is 90%.
But what does that look like as a measure? Like, how, how do we reflect that?
On the, on the completed.
Percentage spent or, or?
Oh, anticipated costs.
I think it's going to have to be in, until it's finalized, it's going to be, it's going to have to be based on anticipated costs. I mean, we, we know, we have meetings all the time, we're like, hey, we're looking, we're going to save money here, this looks like it's going to come here. Like, that, that bottom line number that you have is ever changing, right?
Right.
So whatever it's at, at that snapshot time, that, I mean, that's what we're looking at, right?
I would think all, both of those, I mean.
But you just be careful where you put the button.
Both of those, you're going to be shooting for a hundred percent.
Right.
Well, that's the way, listen, our goal's still a hundred percent.
Fall below it, well, there's got, you know, there's got to be some reason for that, so.
And that's the big, that's the big thing, like, I don't.
The price is still tripled.
But this will then help us be able to turn around and market another bond, because that system's in place of, you know, this is how we're tracking our completion, our timeline, this is how we're tracking the budget, and it gives the avenue to just outwardly share that information transparently.
Well, another way to measure is like percentage of projects that were completed on time.
Or it could be a percentage of projects that had been completed, like we, we aim for 30% to be completed at this time, and we're at 25% completed. You know, it could be like a 30, 60, 75, 100% over the last.
And reporting, you could give us that on the same thing with the budget. You know, we had 25 projects, 18 came in under budget, seven came in over, but our overall budget was.
Yeah.
And that's something that you definitely present to the board, I think it's hard to, you know, say this project is 75% because like the middle school project's going to start, and then it's going to pause for a while, right?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be doing more, they're working differently.
Yes.
Then you would maybe break those projects out, right, like?
Yeah, report one.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm like, you're.
The measurable.
What does that look like in this boxer?
Yeah.
I kind of have something every month that I, on the cap, on the budget piece, like.
Yeah, then maybe like drafting out a master list of all the projects, not just middle school, like in middle school, what are the different projects? And then you're knowing roughly 20, by, by the end of the 2026 school year, what should be completed, create that percentage, and then that's where the stair step until you're hitting the 100% at 28, 29.
I, I know where the problem lies when I ask this question, so, but as far as the, the budget one, could we report that, could we report on only completed projects? I mean, I know that there could be one project that comes in over that skews that number.
Will be completed within HISD overall budget.
Yeah.
Is that how you would?
Yeah, but you're asking about.
I know what's going to happen, right?
Well, I, I just.
I know, I know.
Well, and our high school's going to be over.
But we have a lot of stuff under.
But we've been under on every other project we've done, right? And we have projects that are baked into the high.
And we've made decisions based on that.
That are, that are, that, we, that at one time we were, we were even going to be finished those, so.
Right, right.
Some pretty big jobs.
It flips on Ted and your, your completed projects or over budget, you got some better.
That's what I said, that's what, that's why I said, I know the problem with that.
Adam, what if you reworded it? What if we reworded it to where Huffman ISD will ensure that HISB, HISC bond 2023 prod, capital projects will be within, so you're saying the conglomerate of it, and then what you'll do is percent expended over the course of the, the years?
Yeah, in the very last year, it might be 102% is where we ended up at the total budget, or it could be 98%.
See what I'm saying, like, instead of 100% of the projects are completed within budget, when you know that the high school won't?
Yeah, I, I'm good with that, I mean, I just think about obstacles of our operations Yeah, I I'm good with that. I mean, I just think about obstacles of our operations center, for example.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a clue what thing was gonna prove that. I wouldn't even know what guess to to put on.
Put it on the twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Right, yeah. So so some of that just may have a little bit of.
Yeah. I'm gonna share the H I C.
Right, everything else we can show, we can, a phasing plan of some sort that we can.
No.
All right, are we open to move on? Okay, so the next three are very specific to the financial stewardship and sustainability of the district. Um, they are related to fund balance, days of cash on hand and operating margin. I separated out fund balance and days of cash on hand because I think that there's a, um, there can be a, um, it can be misconstrued that fund balance is a savings account, and it's cash, and it's not. Um, so I wanted those separate. And there could be times that fund balance is low and cash is high and vice versa. So I actually split those out because what I wanted to do is build something in here that ten years down the road, if none of us are here, that it can continue on and be sustained. So at the very bottom of fund balance, um, I have how that, how that is calculated. So anybody at any point in time could go out and look at our financial reports that I present monthly and look to see where we are. With twenty-five percent being the goal based on our board policy, and I referenced the board policy there. Currently, this year, we're looking that we're gonna be at about thirteen percent fund balance. Um, we were able to get that up a little higher because we built that maintenance tax note in into um, our fund balance this year. You're gonna see that it's gonna go down next year because we basically just kind of, we built it in this year to help this year, which means next year's going to be a little bit lower in fund balance. So I kind of created, we want to be at twenty-five percent. So our goal currently is, uh, so the ten percent is is actually a little aggressive. But that's the goal, is to try to get it to ten percent in twenty-five, twenty-six. And then increase it by that additional five percent each year to get us to the twenty-five percent. Um, that's our goal. I don't know if we're gonna get there every year, but I feel like we need to have this plan in place to see where we're trying to go and to measure it moving forward. And I think that's something that we all want to do. Days of cash on hand, um, we are actually going to end, um, if y'all recall, um, earlier this year, I'd let y'all know that this was going to be the worst year. Um, it is. We are actually going to end the year in probably about forty-five days of of cash on hand. Um, you really want it to be ninety days. Um, I set these goals to increase it to sixty, seventy, eighty, and ninety um, over the next four years. Sixty days is the absolute minimum you ever want it to be at. Um, but this is a snapshot. You really only see this at year end because of the way the financials work and and you have to do closing entries and things like that. But I also have on here how that is calculated. Um, I wanted to be very transparent about that. Um, and then operating margin, in an attempt to work towards both a balanced slash surplus general fund budget. And I say that because the only way that we're gonna be able to build up our fund balance is to get to a surplus budget, which means our revenues being higher than our expenditures. Um, otherwise, our fund balance will never increase.
True.
Um, so, um, so this year, it's estimated to be at zero. And again, that is because of that maintenance tax note that we built into fund balance. Our revenues are actually gonna end probably at about point four percent higher than our expenses this year. Um, so I I just put the estimated zero. We're still working on audit, um, year-end entries. Um, the negative two point five percent, that is where I hope we will be. Right now, we are sitting at, based on our budget, negative five percent. But I really am hoping and want to work towards ending the year in negative two point five. It is, it is a goal. Um, we may not hit it. It it may end up at negative five percent, but I think that's, I mean, a goal is something we want to work towards, right? So I didn't want to just put what the easy answer was on it being negative five. Um, and then I put all of these together, I worked on this, and put it all together to make sure if this was true, then we could also get to these other two things, so that they all were interconnected and worked together. Do y'all have any questions or feedback about those three?
If, hopefully, if the land goes through, and we were to sell it, that would bring the fund balance back up to where we need it to be. How do we get to that negative, that that margin? What can we do to get to that operating margin that we need to get to? I mean, even if we get the fund balance up there, we're still over budget.
Still wrong, negative.
Yeah, yeah. So what do, what do we do? How do we get there?
What we have to do is we have to either increase revenue or decrease expenses. So.
Right, and actually, actually, when you bring in more kids, that just brings more teachers, that brings more. You you're in an endless process of whatever you're doing. Yeah, kids bring money, but.
We also bring expenses to support them.
We have to be very intentional over the next year. Because right now, what we're looking at for the, for twenty-six, twenty-seven, without any additional kids, is needing to cut about three to three and a half million dollars. And we're gonna have to, and that assumes no additional kids, right? We're gonna have to be, our team's gonna have to be very intentional on looking at our programs over the next year, looking at our class sizes, looking at that before if someone leaves, we don't automatically hire again. Uh, i- it's going to be, um, we can't sustain a negative fund balance. Or not a negative fund balance, we can't sustain a negative.
What I'm concerned about, two to three million, that's, that's a lot of teachers.
It is a lot.
I mean, it's.
And it's a lot of non-paying.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I I just don't, I mean, I I know that inflation is killing us. But I mean, I I just don't know at what point we'll ever get in that catch-up. Because we used to, every year, we put money back in the fund balance, every year, but in the last three, four, yeah.
Well, we hired staff, um, incorrect me if I'm wrong, guys, but we hired staff to accommodate the growth that was coming. But the growth hasn't come yet. So we have some built-in capacity right now.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah. We do have some, so we may, we may not need another teacher for a hundred kids until we get another hundred ki- uh, like, that's something.
There's still a lot of um, student to teacher ratios that we can still absorb kids.
Right.
And that's where we're gonna have to be very intentional over the next year to try to balance that.
And I know that that threshold, like, uh, high employees are like seventy percent of the budget, supposed to be right at that?
Yeah, it's eighty.
Close?
It used to be eighty, and now I'm hearing some districts where their payroll is even like eighty-seven to ninety percent. But that means the other side of the the expenses, the things that aren't paid, will have to come down.
Incredibly lean.
So.
Oh, well.
It's gonna be fine.
So I have a comment about um, the percentages and what the goals are. So each of these numbers here are in board policy, right?
Um, the fund balance, um, C E Local specifies fund balance, but it puts it in days. Twenty-five percent of fund balance is ninety days. But fund balance isn't cash. So um, twenty-five percent of fund balance is ninety days of fund balance. But cash on hand, i- it's not all cash. So you want to, if if your fund balance was ninety days, you would want all of that to be cash, but it's not necessarily. So so you you kind of want both. And the way I set these amounts were based on our school's first report. What did T A recommend and what got us the most points? What earned us the most points on that school's first report? So on fund balance, C E Local says, um, requires twenty-five percent fund balance. T A says you can get the maximum number of ten points if you have ninety days of cash on hand. So all, while those are both still ninety days, they're two different equations. They're calculated two different ways.
You can have fund balance without cash.
No.
Yes, it's asset liability.
My question would be then, um, if if that is the goal yearly, then shouldn't we have that for every year? And if we fall short, we fall short, but that's the goal? Either way, that's in in local policy, it says this is what we're supposed to have.
C E Local says regarding fund balance, that if the board adopts a budget that does not get us twenty-five percent, and I'm, and I'm, I'm doing this by memory, um, twenty-five percent, then it will have a plan in place to get back to the twenty-five percent. So I developed this with a plan in place of incrementally, this is how we want to get there. Um, but we can totally change it. Um, my thought process of this was to show, yes, we recognize where we are, and this is what our goal is each year to get back to that.
Well, I think that's, that's important because I want to know, I want to be able to get twenty-five.
Yes, in the absence of hearing that part, right? This is what you're supposed to have, right? Well, then that's what we need to have, our goal, right?
But if it says plan in place, then this would be the plan in place.
This is, yes, and that's why I built it that way.
Yeah, and a lot of these things on this scorecard are that, are that way. Like, I want to look at priority four and know what our plan was for this year, and did we meet it? And then, okay, now we can go on to year two. And I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yes.
And and, but there are some things like safety, it's like, it's gotta be a hundred percent from the beginning.
Right, right.
So one is important to look at differently. That's why I, even going back through and looking at those goals and the percentages and how that read.
I always think this last one is the goal. Like, I don't know a lot of these. I guess that's because that's how we read it before, right? A lot of times, it's like, what's our end, our end goal, and this is our plan to get there. A lot of them are built that way.
So that is another reason why I put in in smaller on on here what our end goal was. Now, one thing that I could do is in those measures, I can i- I can include the verbiage to put a pla- put a plan in place to get back to the twenty-five percent um, fund ba- um, I'll have to work.
We already have it here, right? On the description.
Oh, yeah, that one says increase and maintain.
Yeah.
So I just need to fix the days of cash on hand, because operating margin, same, we'll work towards a balanced slash surplus budget.
You may be disappointed in my work, but just Ray Carter, what uh, with the land sale, uh, would there be a way to use those revenues to offset some of the expenditures in the budget for the next couple of years? Like, as a direct.
If you do that, you can. But if you do that, you've still got to work. You're still cutting into fund balance, you're still working with the deficit budget because the, it it's just gonna pull.
I figured it's gonna be like, yeah, like a, especially coming back.
Yeah, it 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 would. What, ideally, what we would want to do is with the land sale is put it into fund balance, which will get us back to.
Right, yeah. Don't allocate it to anything. Don't allocate it.
I'd almost look at it as a way of when we sold the land and we wanted to reimburse, or when we bought the land and wanted to reimburse ourselves from the bond, and that didn't happen, reversing that.
Yeah, let's just back in.
Yeah, let's not spend it, let's just put it right back in.
I don't know, if, yeah, it's just my, a little, yeah, a little.
Like, it's like self-insurance.
Liability, it's on the asset side.
It's, it's self-insurance, your disability.
That's right.
All right, moving on, so um, to piggyback on what you said, Leila, if you look at the administrative cost, um, that one is a little bit different. We generally work with an administrative cost ratio that is below what T A recommends. And you're gonna notice a couple of things. You're not gonna see that eleven percent that you've seen previously. And that is because T A has changed the way that they're calculating it. So in prior years and with that eleven percent that you've seen, um, that is based on administrative cost divided by um, instructional cost to get that eleven percent. Now, they're doing administrative cost divided by all costs, so it's lowering that percentage. Now, they're including transportation in there, they're including maintenance in there. They're including all of that in that total number, so that ratio changed, and they're decreasing it. So for us, for twenty-four, twenty-five, I've estimated it to be about seven point two percent. Um, we were originally budgeted to be less than that, but um, it increased a little bit um, this year. Um, but what, that new number that we want to be at is nega- or I'm sorry, five point eight five percent. And based on our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's five point three nine. So our budget is under that amount. So this would be an example of, we didn't meet where we wanted to be this year, but we expect to be that every year. We don't want to, there's nothing we need to work towards. It's, we're there and we need to monitor and maintain that below the five point eight five percent.
Now, will all of that change when we fill positions?
It could, um.
But I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, finish your answer.
No, I was just wondering if, I mean, is this calculated with the superintendent's full salary and all in there, or?
She did.
Oh, okay.
I did do that.
Okay, I was just wondering, I mean, and then Dr. Nozick's position, is it?
It is not budgeted in there.
It's not budgeted, but if we had to change anything, it would be about this.
And um, I also want to say that the administrative is also instructional leadership. That includes principals, assistant principals, their office staff, that is, you know, receptionist, all of those guys as well. So um, that ratio does include not just central administration, campus administration as well.
But this does include, so not the deputy superintendent, but the chief of academic, chief of academics and student services. That includes that, that position.
It does, but she is not coded to administration. She is actually coded, um, but that position is to curriculum and staff building. Um, Dr. Skinner, while he is an administrative professional, it isn't calculated into this ratio because he is coded to maintenance and transportation, because those are the areas that he oversees. Um, Ms. Bailey is coded there, the superintendent is coded there, I am coded there, uh, Mandy is coded there, um, and then any staff that work along with us would be coded there. Uh, the deputy superintendent is coded there as well.
But his, that salary's not in there.
That salary is not budgeted in for now.
So I know that this is what their new recommendation is, the five point eight five percent. Um, I don't know how they came up with that. I don't know why they came up with it. I don't. In your opinion, what's a good ratio?
So that ratio, I don't know that I've ever thought about that. But I will say that in T A's formula that they have come up with, they recognize that it's, the smaller the district, the higher the administrative ratio needs to be because you're wearing more hats.
Right.
Um, so for example, um, once we hit five thousand students, our ratio would be five and a half percent, not five point eight five.
So, so, I mean, we know we're going there. Should should we change our goal to get under, to stay under five and a half percent?
Possibly, we could do that. So that's what another twelve hundred students.
Like, I love green, right? Green, 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 green. But if we know we're going there, like, hey, let's work towards where we know we're going.
At five and a half percent.
I would consider that.
Okay.
Well, instead of when we get there, now we gotta get it back.
I know, right?
Or could you add underneath the goal statement, add the ratio for the five thousand underneath where it says the five point eight five up to five thousand ADA?
Yeah, according to you, we're gonna be there anyway, possibly this year.
This year?
No, next year.
Oh.
Not this year, next year. I mean, you said five point, you said five point three.
Um, oh, five point.
Yeah, the ratio.
Five and a half since we, I see what you're saying.
You're like, we're hitting the map. So, um, you're, I mean, what you're telling me is, if it it may drop, when we get to five thousand students, to five and a half, you're projecting we're already gonna be there, like, let's try to keep it.
Less than five and a half percent.
Yeah, let's try to keep it in less for five and a half percent.
I I think that.
I mean, if we go, that's a better, then we have a buffer. If we haven't got to five thousand, we go a little bit above, okay, well, let's get it back there again. Let's, I mean, I, that's just my opinion. I I think that if we know where we're going, I don't want to get there and then go, now we have to work on it again.
Now we have to work on it again.
Proactive.
Would you stagger it, like five eight five, five seven five, five six five, five five?
I could, but I think what he's saying is we're already below the 5.5, so why not just go ahead and make it the 5.5?
It's not, I mean, it's just a yellow flag, we go a little bit above. We go above for a year because there's changes happening?
Right.
Okay, hey, we, we went above, but we're not quite, like, let's, let's not get in a bad situation. Let's, let's look at it a little closer this next year.
All right, I've written that down.
My hard-edged mind is not working out for me.
An audit, well, I'm almost done, audit findings. I listed this on here because I think that's an important one to show. We currently have zero audit findings. I plan to continue with zero audit findings. We can take that off if we always expect it to be zero, but I liked kinda showing it on there just to say, oh, and on this forward-facing document, you don't have to look at it, we have no.
Findings.
We have no findings. And then lastly, community financial engagements. This is where I pulled out that piece from the community part to make it more specific for financial and operational. It would be like the Realtor meetings if we start to have any type of financial specific meetings moving forward into the next year. I think it fit here, I think it also fits in the community engagement. It could be aligned items there, but I wanted to add it here to get your feedback.
So we had two Realtor ones this year, so our baseline would be two.
Is that, are you considering that part of this priority four, the Realtor?
Financial and operational.
Because it's talking about growth and.
Those are community construct.
Yeah, you have several of those.
That's part of it, we talk to all kinds of finances and trends.
But that's not really, that's, it is a, would you consider that a community engagement though?
Is it an open forum that anyone can show up?
No, and that's where I think too, if it's something where everyone could show up. But then the Realtor one.
Our tax year.
I mean, technically, those would consider.
We ask for volunteers, I mean, we don't assign, we ask for volunteers who wants to do.
I, I mean.
Like, I mean, that's the whole point of this, to engage with the community. If we're not doing it, we need to stop.
If somebody walked in here, you're not gonna tell them to go home.
Right.
Yeah, but at the same time, like, I mean, the point of it is for them to go out and spread the word.
Yeah.
If, if it's at a point, then I'd rather open up to everybody, you know? Like, I don't know, it's kinda, to me, that's the whole point of it, is to engage with the community, so if it's not.
I know we've talked about in the past, having some type of, starting to have some type of town hall situations that could fit all of this into one type meeting, besides just a normal monthly board meeting.
Yeah.
Every semester, once a year, have whatever.
And like, do one in the morning and then maybe another one in the afternoon, so you meet the needs of, cause.
What that looks like, I don't know.
Well, cause that's where we could build in financial, academic, operational. It's kinda like a state of the district, basically, but doing it.
I don't think it would.
Cause I'm just trying to figure out what to put in the box, like, what would have been our baseline this year? And then that way we know.
State of the district and half the people could sleep out here and all.
And then, and the state of the district's really nice because you can incorporate the kids, like, you could do, there's a lot that we could do to showcase some of that, but.
Yeah, no, I, I.
But then, but then I'm not even sure that it doesn't move up as its own, like, into the community section.
Well, I have the, the, the community, the.
It's gonna be some crossover. I just, where it's measured is where it's measured.
I don't know that it's measured, but just, I mean.
I wouldn't, but.
I would just say, I mean, we just had so many this year.
Or do you put that in your key strategic action and not have it as a measure?
I wouldn't have it that way.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
I mean.
I think it's important.
She has a big piece in hers already. I don't think we need it to double.
You have plenty of measures.
I removed the first report. The thing, the, the three things really driving our first report, points right now where we're losing points are on here as individual measures, and the first report is two to three years behind anyway. This is gonna allow us to track it during the current year, and you'll know what's coming two to three years down the road when we look at that school's first report. There was another thing Dr. Skinner and I talked about, and this will be the last thing unless y'all have anything additional, is there was a facility utilization ratio that we had kind of kicked around, but again, we don't know what that measure would be. And what it does is it looks at the student enrollment based on, and divided by the building capacity. So it could just be built in as part of our capital improvement plan, but basically is, is how far do you wanna let that campus?
Absorb.
Absorb, so are you wanting them to get to 105% of their, their capacity before, you know, before, I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
Or Adam redraws the lines?
Yeah.
Well, it's, yeah, it's hard to, to, you know, that's, that's you guys.
It's a good measurement.
But that's, yeah, it's, it's a good measurement and tool that we use, and we have like the functional capacity versus the max capacity, and we have those different numbers. But the middle school, once we're done, you know, at the end of next summer, that's gonna change, right? And so, but, but, but you, and we feel like it's important for you guys to see what that quantify, the quantify, you know, how we quantify that, but, but we don't know how you reflect that on.
I don't know that it would go here versus on our plan.
I think it's on the plan, 100% on the plan, and it's just something we get reported on. If something gets to the threshold, we just, we gotta know.
Yeah, because it can change.
Yeah, day to day.
You know, it was, it was real bad when I first started on the board because they'd come to us to say the roof's out on, well, why didn't we know this three years ago? So I, it's very important to have that, that plan. And I think we need to go forward with some, to get us a five-year, even a 10-year plan.
Yeah, sure, we agree.
Definitely.
And it keeps y'all on track too.
Well, it's, it's, it's a priority for us, right? I mean, if there's gonna be $100,000, I'm gonna take that plan out. Okay, what's the first things that we need to prioritize, right? That's, that's that piece, but then when it comes to building the bond, the next bond package, having that working document that we've been working with becomes much more useful and beneficial where we can see what the last roof replacement, whatever, last age of that, or.
I think it shows that this is really proactive to the public.
How do we feel about the BSC?
I think it would improve the BSC.
So this is actually, this is perfect, so yeah, this is, so now Mandy's job is gonna be creating outward-facing and then inward-facing, beautifying both sides. I'm gonna add it to our July board meeting agenda to kinda just go ahead and reveal and share that out. And then this absolutely helps us, as tomorrow we have our DLT kickoff, and this is crucial to allowing us to really set the tone for all of our district leaders as to the direction that we're going in. So hopefully, you see every, every, there might be less measures, but they're more intentional measures. They're measures that we're gonna be able to produce data on and report on throughout the year, and they're really aligned with the overarching goal of the direction that we're headed in. So if there are no other feedback, we'll give Mandy the blessing to.
Make it free.
Finalize, and then we'll send that out to y'all. Anything else? Awesome, well, thank you all. It's done.